Elevator quiet.
Husband would say that was more. Dale, when he speaks, people listen.
They're members of the quiet.
I always start the meeting by saying, "Good evening, Washington Courthouse." I think we have Washington Courthouse here tonight. So, good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty PM on October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, and it's time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mrs. Call will give us an invocation, and Mr. Johnson will lead us in the pledge. And if you're able, would you please stand?
Dear Lord, we come before you this evening, celebrating a very special member of this community and coming together to continue to improve our community and continue to see things grow and develop and improve. And we ask for your continued stewardship as we serve our roles within our city. We are grateful for our family and friends who are able to join us here this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Kelly.
All right. Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have our minutes from the regular council meeting on October eighth. Did anybody see any things that needed to be changed, et cetera? And if not, do we have a motion to accept it?
Now, let's see if we have Ted. Mister Ted. Nope, we didn't get a Mister, but that's all.
Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion and add Mister in front of Ted's name.
We got a Mister.
As printed here, to accept him as printed.
Should we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, roll call.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Call up scene.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Communications, Mr. Denon?
None. So, you get a movie later. We'll see.
It's very good you're gonna want to say.
Lucky you.
We have one committee report this evening. That's Service Safety and Recreation, and that is Mr. Hawk's chair.
Oh, we got a Mister for him then.
Yeah.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, October...
Eight.
What day did we meet? October eighth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty PM. Ted Hawk presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member; Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Jim Blair, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mr. Gary Dean, service director; Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief; Mr. Mark Pistick, city attorney; and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, Chief Downing noted the fire department's involvement in multiple community events. Number two, Chief Downing noted that two candidates had taken the fire chief's test and that the hiring process would continue. Chief Downing noted his retirement date of twelve seventeen twenty-six. Number three, the administration noted the police department's increased focus on traffic enforcement. Number four, the committee noted that the street department was preparing for the colder months. Number five, Mr. Gary Dean advised the committee that multiple projects were completed within the city, including brush chipping, mowing, and street sweeping. Mr. Dean presented detailed monthly reports from all departments. Mr. Dean noted his retirement date of January thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. The committee noted that applications were being received for Mr. Dean's position. Number seven, Mr. Dean noted that OPWC full depth repair to Market Street and Clinton Avenue would begin soon. Number eight, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, appointing Mr. Terry Feike on the Board of Income Tax Review. Number nine, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, appointing Mr. Scott Dollmeyer and Mr. Keith Echols on the Board of Building Appeals. Number ten, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, appointing Mr. Scott Dollmeyer on the City Planning Commission. Number eleven, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, appointing Mrs. Mary Polly Dean to the Carnegie Public Library Board. Number twelve, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, appointing Mrs. Marlene Rankin to the Tree Committee. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawk, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Thank you, Ted. Any questions, comments? And if not, does somebody want to make a motion to accept it?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Call up scene.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Uh, reports, Mr. Denon, you are first.
Thank you. Well, we've got a captive audience, so we're gonna go out of order here. And... Let's turn off some lights so we can see a little bit better. Oh. Hopefully I don't trip over anyone there. Periodically, we'll do a promotional video for the community. Uh, we use them in a number of ways, from prospective businesses, just folks out in the industrial park. And this is the latest, greatest, newest version of that, which I'm incredibly pleased with and happy with. It's very short, so it's definitely not going to win.
My favorite thing about Washington Courthouse is the community.
Hands down, speaker, that is another one thing that made me decide to move back to Washington Courthouse. I just miss the kindness and consistency.
With my wife, I moved here, we found community, and it's a great place to have and grow a family.
What keeps me in Washington Courthouse is the fact that it's my hometown. We're able to grow our company and raise our family all with the same community that we love.
The sense of pealing we see in our employees is one of the big parts of keeping us here in Courthouse.
Because I have in love for this area, I wanted to start a business here to see that we continue to flourish.
I think that we're gonna see explosive growth in the Washington Courthouse area for the next five to ten years.
It's gonna be wonderful to be here. It's gonna be cool, busy, creative, young, and...
If I was in New York City, Washington Courthouse is a vibrant downtown, kinda back when I was a kid with the store principal, and people are doing downtown.
All of the opportunities that's gonna be coming this way to Washington Courthouse is gonna be wonderful.
It's gonna be awesome.
And that's the show. Would like to thank everybody that participated with us and helped us with thank you, Jim. That type of work, you know, we don't do horribly often, so it's a lot of fun. Uh, and you can use it in, you know, some non-traditional ways. And some people just look at information a little bit differently now. You know, some folks that rely on something like YouTube for a lot of, you know, how do I do this? Or, you know, I want information about this, that, or the other. And it's just a different way to connect with people. Uh, and a lot of the folks there we've interacted with in a variety of ways over the years. Mike Wellenhurst out in the industrial park has been, over the years, a wonderful partner for the community. Uh, you know, you had Branson at the corner there with the coffee shop; Kate with the flower shop there; and just a lot of people that have made a difference in Washington Courthouse. And in a moment, we'll get to why the crowd's here. Uh, but while we're talking about small businesses, later you're gonna hear from Dwight Fox, the owner of the Billiards Hall... Well, I'm sorry, owner of the business of the Billiards Hall. And I affectionately called Dwight the Billiards King. Uh, you know, there, we've had a lot of movement here very recently in terms of resolving some issues there and really would want to say, uh, been a long road. And incredibly appreciative of the fact of the ability to work with Dwight and the opportunity to do that. Uh, and... It's been a long road, but we're very close to the finish line. And this is something that we're going to get past the finish line because it's a wonderful asset for downtown, especially in the evening. The foot traffic that it generates down there is just a pleasure to see. And you have... You know, sometimes you have an old-fashioned view of a pool hall and what that is and what it means. And, you know, there you have very nice people. Uh, they're out, they're enjoying themselves in exactly the type of thing that we want to see and will continue to work for and do our best to help along. Uh, with that, I'll wait for the rest of the report. Uh, Mr. Lynch and Company have some recognitions to do.
This is the Company. I'll just say to start that normally I get to read these, but I thought the person we're recognizing would much rather have the Company read this, so she's going to do that for us. Go ahead, Mrs. Call.
I apologize in advance for all of the wherasses. I write them with lots and lots of wherasses. So, this is a proclamation from the City of Washington Courthouse honoring Susie Janisov for her distinguished service and celebrating her retirement. Whereas, Susie Janisov began her career of compassionate service on August twenty-first, nineteen ninety-five, as an early intervention developmental specialist, dedicating herself to the care and development of children with unique needs. And whereas, on January first, two thousand and fifteen, Susie Janisov was promoted to Early Childhood Services Director for both the Fayette and Highland County Boards of Developmental Disabilities, expanding her leadership and her impact across our region. And whereas, for over thirty years, Susie Janisov has been a fierce and kind-hearted advocate for children and their families, serving the most vulnerable members of our community with unwavering diligence, grace, and empathy. And whereas, Susie Janisov's legacy is not only found in the lives that she has touched, but also in the vibrant murals that adorn the halls of our Early Intervention Center, testaments to her artistry, creativity, and joyful spirit. And whereas, Susie Janisov now embarks on a well-earned retirement, looking forward to spending cherished time with her husband Steve, their children Amanda, Sam, and Alexis, and their beloved grandchildren, while continuing to explore the world, create art, and tend to the hummingbirds that grace her yard each summer. And whereas, Susie Janisov's contributions have left an indelible mark on our community, inspiring colleagues, families, and future advocates to serve with heart, courage, and color.
Susie, would you come up here before we finish this? This is the way this ends. I don't have to read all the wherasses. Therefore, we, Dale Lynch Chairperson, Steve Schultz Vice Chairperson, Jim Christman Council Member, Ted Hawk Council Member, Caleb Johnson Council Member, Jim Blair Council Member, Sylvia Call Council Member, and Joseph Denon, City Manager of Washington Courthouse, Ohio, on behalf of our community, do hereby recognize and honor Susie Janisov for her extraordinary career and lasting contributions to the well-being of our children and families. We extend our deepest gratitude and warmest wishes for a joyful, adventurous, and art-filled retirement. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and pause this here in the City of Washington Courthouse to be affixed as one second day of October and the year of our 2025. And this has been signed by the City Manager, myself, and Mr. Schultz. And Susie, congratulations. I think the fact that you have all those people here speaks to what kind of person and leader you were. So, thank you on behalf of the children of this community and for the whole community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, before this, please, we need to first get the chair up.
Do you want your family?
Yeah, you want your family?
Aren't your husband up there?
Now, before you sit down, can we get... The family can't sit down, but could we get a picture with Susie and the city council?
Yes.
Did they all just come up?
You just stay where you are.
They didn't stay right timing. Because this comes from all seven of us and City Manager. Joe, you should get up here, too.
Oh, here on the way.
This is not just me or somebody, it's all of us. It's all of us.
Congratulations.
Whereas you listen to...
Whereas.
You're on your way to your family.
And thank you for being the captive audience for the video. Well, they're cheering you on. Now, we gotta pack 'em back over there.
Thank you. Bye, guys. Thank you. See you tomorrow, guys. Bye. They were relatively well behaved.
They're not too wild of a crowd there.
Not too bad. He caught 'em on a good day.
What'd you do, Dwight? Everybody left.
Well, on that happy note, I would like to thank the Ohio Public Works Commission for the cooperative projects on Market and Clinton. Want to remind everybody there that that's not per se patchwork. Uh, what you're doing is you've identified sections of the street where you have significant issues. So, you've milled down much farther than you would for just a resurfacing project, and you've repaired those areas so that in the following year, you'll come back, uh, do the small amount of grinding across the entire face of the street and then do the finish coat of asphalt on top of that. Uh, we do that so that you've identified those problem areas and you get a more lasting product out of it. Market has always had some challenges. You got a lot of old steam line infrastructure underneath that that has seen its better day. And, of course, they never really kept, like, a record of where they put that stuff. Uh, so sometimes it's a bit of a surprise where that pops up, but we've done a lot of, uh, work to address that and filled that up with a lot of concrete and flowable fill so that that is not an issue in the future, hopefully. Uh, but that ought to be a lot more lasting surface there than we've seen in the past, and we'd be very happy with that. Like to remind everybody that the police department, you know, does have a focus on traffic safety the last two weeks in October. Uh, so that is something to be mindful of. Uh, that, uh, interestingly, we've had one traffic stop where we encountered a drunk fellow, uh, that with a firearm, which is not a good thing, but it's nice to be able to take care of that. Trick or treat, speaking of driving safely, that is the traditional Thursday before the day of Halloween, the traditional hours, six to eight. Uh, folks, you really need to slow down when you're driving around town. Uh, you have a lot of pedestrians out in areas that you're not used to seeing them. Sometimes some of their costumes aren't really that easy to see at night. And the folks who are out with the kids really need to pay attention to them. They're excited, they're fairly sugared up. Uh, so they're on jet fuel and out there, and, you know, they can do some unexpected things, like hop out in between parked cars. And we just need to all be careful about what's going on there. And also, if you're in a neighborhood, uh, you need to be mindful that when you park to get out with your kid, if you've driven to another neighborhood in town, that you're not doing something like blocking somebody's driveway. Uh, a little bit of courtesy there goes a long way. And we get through the night, and it's a lot of fun. Casey Coyle and Chris Weisong are the two people that are progressing through the fire chief selection process. They are both excellent candidates, and we work forward to advancing that process a bit more on Friday and progressing with that so that we continue to arrive at a conclusion. Uh, we had a recent house screening for employees, and would like to thank all the employees that participated in that screening. You know, you do a little bit of basic blood work there, blood sugar, cholesterol, blood pressure, all the things I fail. Uh, and, you know, that helps to identify issues in the long run, and it's really nice to know and a little bit of peace of mind for folks that that option is there and they take advantage of it. Ornance sixteen twenty-five begins a fairly complex process with CRA, NCA, and TIF associated with residential development. Uh, we reviewed that issue with Brooke and Eckler a while ago, uh, but that is the beginning of that process that you will see several pieces of legislation on. Uh, the long-term there goal there is sustainable development, development that is financially beneficial to the community as a whole and encourages further residential development so that those opportunities exist for folks in Washington Courthouse uh, to have a diverse selection of housing opportunities. You know, each development may not fit for everybody because, as one council member observed in the past, that's why you got chocolate and vanilla ice cream. Uh, but, uh, over time, you continue to develop a diversity of options there. I'd like to thank Ron, Tina, Katie, and many others for the process with the annual financial audit. And then we also do something called the Gap Conversion, which, what that is, is it's valuing assets of the city so that you get theoretically a fuller financial picture. We do that because the state of Ohio encourages you to do that. The one thing I will say is that we have a lot of assets that have a value, but they're not marketable. Uh, like Market Street, you've improved its value, but it's not like you can sell it to anybody. Uh, but that would be an example of an asset of City Washington Courthouse, but one that is not per se a really marketable one. Board appointments, would like to thank everybody that's willing to do that. Uh, we talked about a number of folks. So, we've got the folks we talked about clearly in the committee and the other folks that you indicated we could go out and talk with. And would like to thank Kelly and Harmony for tracking a lot of those folks down and talking to a lot of them. And, uh, folks' willingness and ability to serve is deeply appreciated. Some of them, you know, we work with very directly. Uh, others, a little bit less so. And some of them, they need to be there if they're needed, but the frequency with which they are needed is relatively rare. Uh, the most telling example of that would be the income tax board review. Administratively, you can take care of, uh, an appeal with a taxpayer, uh, one appeal in a calendar year administratively. Uh, and if they don't like the answer, then they can go to the Tax Board Appeals. Or if there's a second issue, then they go to the Board of Tax Appeals. And in fifteen, in the past fifteen years, I can't remember one. So, we're very happy that we're able to resolve those issues for folks relatively easily and quickly and move that along. Uh, tonight, you had the recognition of Susie, truly a wonderful person in the community. And we had the video. And for me, that is what Washington Courthouse is about. Now, sometimes we have differences of opinion, yes. Sometimes we have a few challenges, yes. But like the pool hall, you work towards their resolution. And, you know, I can't get over how thrilled I am that Dwight is with us tonight. And, you know, there's been some difference of opinion about that one, but I would like to thank everybody that we have interacted with and has assisted in work with that resolution of that issue. That's something I deeply appreciate about. Uh, that concludes my report for this evening. Is there anything else you folks want to talk about?
Joe?
Yes.
Great video.
Good, thank you.
I have one question.
Uh-huh.
In it was a short bit of some kids playing on playground equipment.
Uh-huh.
Is that in one of our parks?
Yeah, I believe everything in the video is from here.
Yeah, that was I'm in part, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, everything's from here. That would be, if I remember correctly, I'd have to watch it. I think it's not too far away from the Shutter House down there. Relatively close.
Anything else?
No, I, you know, that... There was another video for another entity that they were working on, and it was not just Washington Courthouse, it was a larger area. And, you know, we had to point out to the person that they had a fire truck that said Silver Creek Township on it. And, you know, that can't be us, because there is no such township. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Mr. Sockman, we heard your report earlier, but you need to give us one during the council meeting.
Well, like Joe said, uh, we went through both of our audits. Last year, when we did it, we had the gap in April, and then later in May, the state would come in and do theirs, but we had the provision running them at the same time, which, kinda going back and forth, but we got through them. Uh, last year was four days with the state. Uh, this week was two and a half days, and we had no issues, which, uh, is a real testament to the team, um, you know, for everything that we've done and put up with as far as trying to get everything in there together. Um, and when it did open up, to try to get all those records together before they come in. Uh, and for them to say that, you know, on their end right now, they didn't see any issues, that there should be any problems with anything, so we were really happy with that. Um, overall, too, financially, we're setting good. Um, you know, we'll get to the end of the year and then see. We'll probably have to do a supplemental, uh, but we'll get to that once we, kinda, get this audit stuff all stamped away. But, uh, our gap should be finalized with the state by the end of this month. And then sometime in November, the state audit will be available for everybody. Uh, we also talked about the ClearGov a little bit. It's up and running. We should have the twenty twenty-four stuff all up before the end of this year, and then we'll start the twenty twenty-five as soon as we get the budget approved. And, uh, we'll start making monthly posts of the checks there so everybody will be able to see from a monthly standpoint what expenditures are going out, so... But overall, like I said, we're happy with the way the audits turned out. And, uh, you know, I just, you know, I had a great team. Everybody just pitched in and did it. I mean, really, it's not me, it's them. So, uh, but anyway, I appreciate it, and that's all I got. Unless there's any questions?
I just disagree with you on one thing. It is you.
Yes.
Along with the team.
Team, yeah. Well, they, uh, they did a lot of the heavy lifting to help me out, though, so, but like I said, congratulations, but that's all I got. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pistick, you got anything this evening?
You'll probably be hearing from different citizens around about getting bills for mowing. So, we're getting the final bills out. There's still a few yards that we're mowing. And they'll also be going for the trash and cars that we've been picking up. So, just so you know, that's going on right now.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Pistick? Then, local residents, and we have one signed up to speak tonight. Dwight, you want to come up? State your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Dwight Fox, owner of Breakaway Billiards, eight oh four East Temple Street, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. Eight oh four East Temple Street, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. I've been a resident my entire life. Fifty years old. But, uh, so the, uh, I'm just here tonight to talk a little bit about the article that was posted by the Record Herald yesterday evening. There was, I feel, some misconstrued information and I just want to not blame anybody, but maybe give a, an insight on my point of view. So Mr. Breedlove issued Breakaway a temporary permit, occupancy permit, August first. With the agreement that we would become compliant of changing usage from merchant tile to assembly. Also installing restrooms and an egress hallway for safety reasons, safety reasons on the right side. So the patrons wouldn't have to go through the kitchen, they can go through a hallway to the back door. Breedlove insisted that the designs and drawings come from an architect. So August first is when we received the temporary permit. August sixth or seventh is when McCarty was hired to do the, the designs and the plans. And, you know, once he designed them, he had to correspond back and forth with Mr. Breedlove for approval. We received the approval from McCarty Monday. We was told prior to submitting a approval, for approval, we was told that we couldn't start any construction without an approval and a permit. And if we did, it would be sent to prosecutor's office just, just we. So that's why we didn't begin process of construction. It wasn't because we was negligent on our end to start product, or start the construction. It was just a process that we had to go through between the engineer firm and the building department. There's also been a lot of misconstrued information of, you know, as far as the city, you know, not helping, not wanting, wanting to shut me down. Just a lot of negative comments that way and I just want to clear that up as well. I've talked to many of you guys and a lot of you guys have been very supportive in the, the Breakaway Pool Hall. Very, very positive words from a lot of you. Joe Denon has been a big help. He's actually gave me advice at a ti- at certain times. And quite honestly, I probably wouldn't have had the temporary permit to open up if it wasn't for Joe. So, you know, I just want to make that known to the citizens, to the council. I also want to make known that Breakaway is a safe environment. Anybody can come in, I promise you, you're going to feel safe. It's a clean, fun, family environment for everybody to be in. The citizens of Washington Courthouse, there's a lot of patrons, a lot of people that's really enjoying the place. And it's really a good thing to see. That's really all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Dwight.
Thank you Dwight.
Okay. We have a lot of legislation.
Sorry.
Lot of names. That's okay. I'm glad, as I think Mr. Denon mentioned earlier, I really appreciate we have citizens that are willing to do these different jobs. So anyway, let's get started, first of all, with legislation previously introduced. And we'll start with a resolution number R forty twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R forty twenty twenty-five on second reading.
Second. Discussion.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, to apply for funding through the Land and Conservation Fund Program and accepting great obligations if funded.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Next is resolution number R forty-one twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'll move we put a resolution, R forty-one twenty twenty-five on second reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-one dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Ohio Council Eight, AFL dash CIO, Local three eight one nine.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. That was Jim. Let that end the table. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Moving to new legislation, our first is ordinance number sixteen twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number sixteen twenty twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, determining that a petition to establish the res- the Washington Courthouse New Community Authority District is sufficient and complies with the requirements of section three four nine point zero three of the Ohio Advice Code in Form and Substance, setting the time and place for a hearing on the petition and authorizing the notice by publication of such hearing.
Resolution number R forty-two twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move we put a resolution, R forty-two twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-two dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Mr. Terry Fife to the Board of Tax Review for a term concluding on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Next is resolution number R forty-three twenty twenty-five.
I move we place resolution number R forty-three dash twenty twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a point of concern on this. Mr. Scott Dahlmeyer is being appointed to the Board of Building Appeals. And also back here, he's being appointed to the City Planning Commission. I don't really think that's the best policy. I think he should be on one or the other. So I'm, I have no on that one.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Is there anyone else who wanted it?
I don't know how for that one, Scott was really, I believe, to be reappointed, as I recall. Or is he new, Kelly?
No, I apologize, he's reappointed.
Reappointed, yeah.
Mr. Bryant said all of his.
Well, then I have a problem with that because he's on, and he on, which one's he on now? The City Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I, I'm just concerned about some of the decisions that's being made by the City Planning Commission. For example, allowing this new oil change place to come down there at Five Points in an already congested area. So I would prefer somebody different, somebody new, to be appointed to that City Planning Commission, perhaps to give us a different perspective on when somebody wants to come in.
Oh, I understand and appreciate that. Now, for your information, Jim. That was a lot of record and it's access from Kroger's property. So there's no approval for the oil change place that, that was required. There wasn't anything for the planning commission to say yea or nay to. Also, to my recollection, I don't think we've ever had anybody file an appeal to the Board of Building Appeals in the entire time that we've had it. That's a function when the, the state said that shall do this in a uniform manner. That's one of the things that they wanted you to put together. But then, we've had it for, you remember how long, Mark?
Oh, we've had it quite a while.
Yeah, and I don't think that, I don't ever recall anybody ever filing appeal. Now, that's of a practical nature, like, oh, let's say, you know, you're building a deck and Rod thinks you need to use a two by ten and you think you need to use a two by six and, you know, you can file an appeal for that type of thing.
What about the, when they was going to put the truck stop or was it Sheets or somebody down there where the old toyed building used to be? Was that approved by the City Planning Commission?
No, no one ever filed in that. No one ever did anything with that.
So what do they do? What's the City Planning Commission do?
They do plot review, like recently, they would have completed the layout for the first phase in the Bryant property or they're the ones that go through and did the, the layout for the development of, oh, that property that's being developed now off of Merit Way. That, the Sheets thing, no one ever, there was that interest there, probably from a real estate person. Sometimes you have folks that kind of do that freelance, they'll try to put together a location and then shop it to a company like Sheets. No one ever really confirmed that, that Sheets was ever really directly interested in that piece of property. And I would guess that that was what I call the freelance real estate agent. But if you looked at the size of that property and you compared it to, oh, that, that Sheets location out in Jeffersonville, the, the size difference was considerable. You, you could not have built the Jeffersonville facility. It just wouldn't fit on the amount of ground that was there, even if you acquired that other little piece of property next to it. But there, if that property did develop in a different way because of its proximity to that, that intersection, we'd be very interested in, oh, how you go in and out of thing, entrance and egress there.
Okay, well, I would just, you know, with both of them there, I thought, well, maybe there could be a potential conflict. And surely there's somebody else that could, we wouldn't have to put the same guy on two different
committees. That's just my, my opinion.
I'll still put that on.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
No.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-three dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the appointment of Mr. Scott Dahlmeyer to the Board of Building Appeals for the City of Washington Courthouse for a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Next is resolution number R forty-four twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move we put a resolution, R forty-four twenty twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Uh, which one are we on?
R forty-four.
The forty-four, Jim.
Forty, the second page here.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Sorry.
That's okay.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the appointment of Mr. Keith Echols to the Board of Building Appeals for a city, for the City of Washington Courthouse for the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Resolution number R forty-five twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R forty-five twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-five dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Mrs. Mary Polly Dean to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Resolution number R forty-six twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move we put a resolution, R forty-six twenty twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add a, another name for suggestion to that position. Since Mr. Dahlmeyer's already got one, I'd like to see if Kelly Kessler Key would be interested in that, that position.
Wow. I, I'm shocked. I agree with you. I think it's a conflict of interest for him to be on both. I don't know what's involved in that before I, I, I could possibly be interested in it. Well, I, I've had to deal with a lot of things for the Hill, that's for sure.
Okay, I would just like to have her name submitted as, for that position.
Can we place that on hold until she decides?
If there's a motion in a second that, that's carried to, to table it, we could explore it further, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We table this resolution, R forty-six twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Hawk? This is to table.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
No.
Lynch?
Okay, doesn't hurt to table it, yes. Um, okay, table, so we can move on. Resolution number R forty-seven twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R forty-seven twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Mrs. Marlene Rankin to the Tree Committee for the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Resolution number R forty-eight twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R forty-eight twenty twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-eight dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mrs. Kay Casper to the Fayette County Family and Children First for the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Continuing on, resolution number R forty-nine twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move we put a resolution, R forty-nine twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Mr. Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Mr. Hank Rosman to the Civil Service Commission for a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Resolution number R fifty twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R fifty twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. By the way, I would mention, Mr. South are sitting right back there. If anybody has any questions, there he is. He's a graduate of Washington High School and spent many years in the service of his country and has moved back here in his retirement. Anyway, roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R fifty dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Mr. Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mr. Rory Sauer to the Civil Service Commission for a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Resolution number R fifty-one, twenty-twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R fifty-one, twenty-twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R fifty-one dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mrs. Rhonda Turner to the Fayette Metropolitan Housing Authority to fulfill an unexpired term concluding on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Resolution R fifty-two, twenty-twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R fifty-two, twenty-twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman? Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R fifty-two dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Gail Allen to the Community Fair Housing Board for a term concluding on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Resolution number R fifty-three, twenty-twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move you to the resolution R fifty-three, twenty-twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R fifty-three dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mrs. Rhonda Turner to the Community Fair Housing Board for a term concluding on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Thank you, Kelly, a lot of reading. Miscellaneous, Mr. Johnson, what have you got tonight?
Well, um, I'll first off, start off by saying thank you for everyone who's stuck around. Uh, even though they're not here anymore, thank you also to, uh, Suzie Janisoff and, and Dwight Fox. Especially Dwight, must've been tough to come up here and talk to us, but, um, if we know anything, a man who owns a billiard store has balls, so. You still miss them. I did, I did. I gotta. You blanked it now. Better than the typical jokes from the bench. Well, thank you.
Kelly, cut that out, will you? Edit that out.
You know, uh, uh, is this our last one before the election?
It is.
They did, yeah, so I forgot about that. Well, um, no matter who you vote for, just take a second for the community and go out and vote, vote. Sort of came up a little bit again, even in the, the, um, resolutions there, but, you know, I just really appreciate anyone who, who gives their time, uh, whether it's voting or on these committees and we pick someone and, um, we don't have a long list of names of people who really want on these committees, and so anyone who wants to be on, we wanna try to give them a spot. What we do, what you do, it's, it's public service and not many people are doing public service anymore. Sort of on that topic, one thing that's really been, it's come up, this topic of, of homelessness and addiction. It's kind of been on my heart this past week or so, seeing it, and, uh, I, I know that uh, the people who, who talk about a solution to this, I, I'd like to think that they're, they're not bad people. Um, and, and I appreciate them talking about it, I just know that, um, you know, throwing people in jail, sending the police after them, um, you know, force, it's, it's not gonna fix this issue. There's a deeper issue to it, I think we all agree to that. There's something much deeper at issue there. You know, those solutions, they're Band-Aid solutions, they can have unintended harmful effects on the community. Police are more at risk if you just send them out and you, you know, 'cause what happens whenever you only send police to, to problems and, and to arrest people? Well, suddenly the people see police and they go, oh, something bad is gonna happen to me. And, uh, it, it puts police officers at risk. Police officers don't wanna be put in a position where they're just going out and the community thinks they're just picking on poor people. It's not fair to our police officers to put them in that position. Again, I'm, I'm not gonna pretend I have all the answers, but I do think I've got three sort of little pillars of, of wisdom that I think that everyone in the community can and should agree on when we think about how we would address such a problem. They're kind of an unorthodox collection, it's, it's a collection, uh, of, of wisdom that I've learned from Proverbs, uh, from Scrooge, and from JFK. Uh, so Proverbs teaches us that when you work with the poor, you're giving a loan to God. And I can't think of anyone I would rather loan to. And when we are willing to help those who are struggling, we will be repaid by God with interest, whether that's individually or as a community. And, and again, I'm just really alarmed when I hear people say, throw the homeless in jail. Did we not learn from Ebenezer Scrooge when he said, are there no prisons for the poor? And when I hear that, I'm just afraid that some in our community truly have, that they've got this sad, cold heart of Scrooge. We're better than that approach, I know that. And, uh, lastly, I, I know it's just become all too common for people to blame government when they see a problem in the community. You know, they say, government needs to do this for me. And I think JFK might've been on to something when he flipped that narrative. So let's start working on our own community. I would love to see more people give their time. Some people give their money, but if you don't have money, you can always give your time too. That's something that people overlook now. If you could actually give your time to help those in need rather than just yell at the government to be your savior, I really just wish more people would do that. And that's like, uh, that's just the truth, that's more people in our community, I, I wish more people would step up. You know, we got, like I said, it's not a long list of people who wanna be on these committees this election, it's five people for four seats. Previous cycle I was on, there were a number of write-in candidates, but no one actually wanted to get their name on there in time. It was just four choices for four seats. Time before that, I think it was, was it five for four seats? Yeah. We don't have a, a huge variety of people willing to step up in this community. There's a lot more people who are willing to move their, their fingers than move their legs to get out to, to the problems in our community. I, I just don't want us to be a people who look at problems and, and we give lip service in lieu of heart. I, I think that we're better than that, I think that when I grew up, there were, uh, it wasn't everybody, it's, I'm not saying that there wasn't problems when I was growing up, but I think service was more valued, and I just really appreciate anyone who gives their time to, to do that. So, yeah, I, I love this community and I hope that is, when we do approach these deep topics like homelessness or drug addiction, that maybe we just remember some wisdom before we try to throw the first solution that comes to our mind at it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Uh, yes, just two things, I wanna thank all the people in the community that are stepping up to become part of the members of some of these boards in the, in the community. I appreciate that, and then also, vote, 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 that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's basically the same thing, I wanna thank everybody that showed up tonight, we had a full house and for that was fantastic, and for Suzie, congratulations to her, that is quite a, thirty-some years, you said? That's fantastic, yeah, that, that's a difficult job too, working with children like that, so. But, um, wanna congratulate her, uh, I'm excited about those next four years on city council. We've accomplished a lot over the last four years, but over the last eight years, we've accomplished a lot. We wanna continue moving the city forward, and the way you do that is, uh, working, everybody working together, thinking together, and coming up with solutions together. That's how you move anything forward, but there'll be discussions, there'll be people that don't agree with this, people that don't agree with that, but in the end, communication, listening to each other goes a very long way and it solves a lot of problems. So we have to communicate, we have to listen, uh, a positive attitude doesn't hurt a thing. Matter of fact, that helps you move forward also. Get rid of the negatives, there is negatives everywhere you go. If you're looking for negative, I guarantee you're gonna find them. Positives, you work a little harder at that, because no one likes talking about too many positives. They always, the news is always negative. So, moving forward, positive thinking, and I'm looking forward to the next four years of working on city council. We're, we're gaining a lot of ground, it's gonna look different four years from now, our downtown, our city in general's gonna look different. So, I urge everybody, again, to get out and vote, like, uh, everybody said, that is the way you move the city forward. So, that's what I'm looking forward to, but thank you very much, that's all I got.
Mrs. Call?
Um, I wanna extend thanks to Mr. Denon, who was on board with the idea of celebrating Suzie, who is a really, really neat human being. Um, she's one of the first people that I became very good friends with when I moved here a decade ago. She was the first phone call that I made, I didn't know who she was at the time, when Arthur was diagnosed with autism and called in a panic at the Board of DD, like, I don't, I don't know what, I have no idea what autism even means, what am I doing? Um, and she talked me down and was like, you're still the same kid, you're still the same mom, you got it. Um, and she was right, and it was maybe a few months later that she called me up and said, what, what if you left high school English behind and did what I do, why don't you come do that with me? Um, and absolutely changed the trajectory of my life, I just, I would not be where I am without her, so. Very grateful for her, very, very proud of myself for not crying when she was there. I was gonna cry.
You didn't?
Not, I didn't, I did really good, um, so just really neat, and, I mean, you saw the, the massive community support and she's just very loved. Um, in that vein, she and a lot of other community members and council members came to the community playground meeting that we had last week, had a great turnout, lots of good information. Um, there is an email and it's, it's on my Sylvia Call for City Council page, but, I mean, you can get it from Mr. Denon and whoever, but if, if you guys would all write emails saying what an inclusive playground would mean in our community, whether you have kiddos or not, I think just the volume of community members speaking in favor of something like that can be helpful for this grant. So through the end of October, we're looking for emails, I haven't done mine yet, but I will, I promise. But that's all I've got.
Mr. Hawk?
Well, I, I love this town and I've lived here a long time. I, I wasn't born here, but I went away to be born and came back to live, to live there. We have a good town here and it's, it's really been a privilege to, uh, be, be a part of, of, uh, the decision-making. I don't consider myself any great wise guru on, uh, solutions to everything, but I think collectively, it, it's been good to be part of a body that, of people that are, for the most part sincere about what the decisions we make and, and, uh, so many things to weigh and look at and, uh, we discuss things and, uh, we've been doing it in a fairly amicable manner. A lot of towns don't have that privilege. And, uh, so I, I just, I'm just glad to be a part of it, I'm glad to be able to have a say in my affairs and what happens to me and my family and, and, uh, I just think it's, it's good to be a representative of my fellow citizens. I, I enjoy doing that and it, it's, it's, and I enjoy being an American. It's, it's one of the greatest privileges in the world. And, uh, I, I, I echo what Mr. Johnson said a while ago. Uh, I, I think we need to have compassion in everything that we do and, uh, sometimes maybe you might have to be a little bit hard-nosed and have tough love, but for the most part, I think, uh, just thinking things through and, and another part of proverb says, get advice from a lot of people. And, uh, so we listen to each other and we do it and, uh, so I like our system, the way this is done and, and, uh, I really enjoy this, so, and I feel privileged, that's all.
Mr. Christman?
There again, I'd like to say, like what Ted said, it is a good town. Glad that we still have this many people left, let's see, two, four, six, eight, we got eight about, what, thirty-eight left? That's, 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 that's not really, well, yeah, it was a winning thing, so we got some good people there. So thank you all for coming, appreciate it.
That's it?
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, I would just add, in the last two years, there have been seven council positions available for people to take. Eight people have run for those seven positions. If you remember, two years ago, there were three positions and three people. So, there's not a lot of interest or, there's not a lot of people that wanna put up with negative things that go on and stuff, I don't know. Several years ago, I wrote for my government class a Halloween poem. And I thought I would read my Halloween poem this evening. Each time of year, when we get to month ten, we think of some things all over again. It's ghosts and goblins and other scary things, Dracula with his cape or as a bat with his wings. Wicked witches are present with broomsticks and hats, you're guaranteed to see a great many black cats. There's hobos and trolls to add to the scare, go to a haunted house only if you dare. A headless horseman may ride by to drive you insane, just like he did poor Ichabod Crane. The werewolves come out at the twelve o'clock hour, don't go to the Bates Motel if you need a hot shower. There are scary things to the left and right and don't forget your back. Look out for snakes and spiders when you crawl into your knapsack. Yes, there's all kinds of frightening things this time of the year, but there's one thing that causes me the ultimate fear. If you want to know what scares me, I'll give you this. If you want to know what scares me, I'll give you this note. The scariest thing in America is the citizen who doesn't bother to vote. We are going to go into, if we have a motion, executive session to discuss personnel issues. There will be no business carried out after the executive session. You could go over there and wait if you wanted, but I think you'd be kind of wasting your time. Anyway, if somebody wants to make a motion to go into executive session, I would appreciate it.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
On second.
Roll call, Kelly.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Kelly, it looks like it's forty up there.